Mayor, can you check your mic, please?
Right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Claffey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perdok?
Here.
Mayor Sluton?
Here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Vice Mayor Perdok.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep standing, Mr. Perdok again.
Sure.
I'll call on you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would, please bow your head and join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, the great Creator of everything we know and love, we ask for your blessing tonight, in this place, in these halls, that your Spirit would be with us to guide and lead us to do the good work for the city of Clear Lake and for its citizens and guests. Thank you. We ask a special blessing for those who are in service, both first responders in our health care field and those just trying to make ends meet in this time. Father, we thank you for those blessings and we thank you for those we don't even know we've received. We give this up to you with all our love and respect, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Flora?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We would go ahead and ask that we pull item seven and eight from the... They're on the consent agenda because they're not ready for action tonight.
All right. Can I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept the agenda with the adjusted removals.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Perdok and a second by Councilman Kramer. We'll go to our electronic voting. It's not refreshing. All right, we'll do a voice call.
Mine did.
Oh, here it goes. Mine doesn't either.
Yeah, wrong one, yeah.
Doesn't seem to work. Voice call, voice call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We go to presentations. Presentation of October Adoptable Dogs. Mr. Who is taking this item? Look like Charmaine's. Hi, Charmaine.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have two dogs to present. Our first dog is Parker, presented by the police chief.
See if the microphone's on because this is...
It is. I can hear it.
Oh, wow, look at a big dog.
Okay, so this is Parker. And the police chief is actually fostering him, leading by example, as always. And Parker's about a year and a half old. Came in as a stray. He's super sweet.
Chief.
Yeah, how he likes you.
Three dogs, bunch of kids.
Just got neutered and recovering nicely at the chief's house. He's a little reserved at first, just, you know, needs some training and socialization, but all in all, he's a nice boy. He just met the next dog up and they had a nice interaction.
Intrigued.
Yeah.
Been dealing with dogs at the windows.
So, yeah, if you're looking for a nice rottweiler, Parker's your boy.
How old is he again?
About a year and a half, year and a half. He's young.
Done growing?
Probably. He'll fill out a little bit, but we think so.
Not as big as he's gonna get, yep.
Beautiful dog.
So, yeah, neutered, microchipped, vaccinated. The works. Good boy.
No, chief, I think you're growing on... He's growing on you.
Maybe he should be the station dog. I don't know, you know? Look at how good he is.
There you go. All right.
Okay, and next up, trick-or-treating favorite. This is Milk Dud.
Milk Dud.
Milk Dud.
And Alyssa, I'm sorry.
His name is Milk Dud?
We named him Milk Dud, yeah. Halloween theme. Hi. So Milk Dud is approximately 10 to 12 weeks old. Also came in as a stray. He is pretty much potty-trained. We were really surprised, crate-trained too, but he'll... He's okay at the shelter overnight and doesn't, you know, make a mess and it's kind of... And he goes to the bathroom, you know. Somebody worked with him at some point. Not neutered yet, but he will be soon. He is old enough for it, definitely. And, you know, all the puppy stuff, puppy teeth, puppy manners. But he's sweet and he liked Parker. That's it, Milk Dud.
So those are the only two dogs we have at the shelter?
No. Did you want us to bring them all?
That'd be cool.
Just close the doors and just let them run around?
There you go. We'll have the next city council meeting at the shelter.
Could do that, could do that.
No, how are things at the shelter, Ms. Wilden?
They're going, they're going.
Yes.
I'll do the stats.
Okay.
And then we have a couple other things.
I didn't know if you're gonna give a report tonight or not.
Yes, but I have to do this to read. Okay, so...
Okay.
Then we have a couple other things.
I didn't know if you're gonna give a report tonight or not.
Yeah?
Instant repeat.
Oh. Okay, so this is from January 1st to now. Owner guardian surrenders, we've had 56. Seized custody, 168. Strays picked up, 407. Wildlife, 48. Adoptions, 34. Return to owners, 95. Transfers to rescues and other agencies, including the wildlife, 267. Euthanases are still at 5. And that's about it for that. Wildlife released, 3. So a couple new categories, I guess.
What does wildlife relief mean?
Wildlife released, where they maybe were just in a little situation and got rescued and then set off and safe, yeah.
Okay.
And then something new is calls for service, in case you were wondering how many calls came through and for what. So cruelty and neglect calls, 17. Animal bites or dangerous dogs, 100. Barking complaints or enforcement issues, 161. Patrol, things that the officers notice while they're just driving around, 50. Phone call requests, 99. People have questions or reporting things. Police assist, 28. At-large strays, 648. Transporting animals to other areas, 18. Welfare checks, 106. And then wildlife calls, 76.
Is this for the year?
Yes, from January.
Is there a way we can get a report for like...
Well, actually, this might be, this might be just for...
Just the month?
October, yeah. It says on here, calls for service, October.
What the euthanasia rate is for the...
Five.
Five, five members?
Five total from the beginning of the year.
The percentage.
Yeah. Oh, we're still at 99%.
So that's what's confusing. When it's saying five total for the year, the report is... So something's not coinciding here. It's either for the year or it's for the month.
Well, the at-call, the new category for calls for service was just for the month.
Just for the month, okay. That's what I'm trying to get, so, okay.
And our live release rate is still at 99%. A couple new things are new Facebook pages. So we have our own North Bay Animal Services Clear Lake page. And you can check that out for, you know, stories like rescues or injured animals, you know, that we want to let the public know about. And then there's also North Bay Animal Services Lost and Found Pets for Clear Lake. And so that's where we're gonna post animals that come into the shelter, where we used to post it on Clear Lake Animal Control Facebook page. So if you just search those, they should come right up. Yes, yeah, but they are also, you know, still on the North Bay Animal Services website. We had a dog Liberty that came into the shelter, transferred to North Bay. She was just adopted yesterday. And currently, we have 30 dogs available for adoption.
Thirty?
At the shelter, yeah, that are vetted and ready to go.
Is that a lot more than usual or is that about the going rate?
It's probably the going rate.
What's your population for dogs at the shelter?
Right now, we have 70.
Excuse me?
70.
Seven, zero?
Seven, zero, yeah.
That seems to be a little over what we thought we were gonna have there.
Yeah. There is, you know...
Is there a plan in place that we can adopt those out, maybe take them to a different shelter? Isn't that part of the contract?
I'm not sure about that specifically. But it's kind of a nationwide crisis, I guess, if you wanna call it. Shelters everywhere are struggling to get dogs out, especially to rescues, you know. Organizations that normally helped us are struggling also.
Okay.
So, you know, if you're asking personally, I feel like, you know, community needs to step up and try to help us with fostering and adopting, long-term fostering, you know, something.
Any thought on why the increase?
There's data that I've read. A lot of it has to do with the recession, housing. You know, people just can't afford their animals anymore. Having to move somewhere where they can't have them. You know, and just in Clear Lake in general, people die, people go to jail. We end up with all those.
Wait, what?
Hmm? I mean, the normal stuff on top of the other stuff.
Yeah, if I may, what is one word? Thank you. If I may, it's definitely... We have a lot more dogs there than what we would like to have. And as Charmaine mentioned, there's challenges with other rescues. There's other shelters that have stopped intake. You know, you're probably aware the county, because of some other resources, has stopped providing services. North Bay Animal Services in particular, our folks out there are still trying to make things work. But we really do need people to step up and adopt where they can. Responsible pet ownership also. And if people need resources with helping to get spay or neuter, is reach out to North Bay. They can point them in the right direction. Oftentimes, there's a lot of resources that people will just ask, as opposed to waiting and then showing up to the kennel with a bunch of puppies or whatnot. So any way that people can help, we have reached out to the director for North Bay and, you know, again, trying to continue to engage because we can't sustain having it that full there. It's really hard on them to be able to take care of all the dogs, exercise them, and so forth. So it's definitely a challenge. And from the staff side, we'll continue, even though it is contracted out, to try to support them in whatever way possible as far as getting the word out and that sort of thing. But we definitely, you may recall when we built the facility, you know, we didn't build it for 70-something dogs, so... But, good news, Parker, we have an adoptee or adopter. Our city clerk is going to adopt Parker. We've been trying to work on something and apparently the details... Parker will have a forever home, so thank you.
That's good. Chief, I have a follow-up question. With the, I was, I'm surprised to learn that the shelter is so, so well-populated. Do we have room if we have any aggressive animals that need to come in?
So I think the staff, you know, somebody's getting upset, does a good job of making... Do you wanna say something? Of making space available, but it certainly is a concern that we have because we do, you know, as a public shelter, we do need to make sure that we have a place to take aggressive animals and so forth. So I wouldn't be surprised, you know, ultimately, it's North Bay's call, but, you know, in the interim, there may have to be some restrictions on some stray dogs and so forth that aren't causing a risk. But hopefully, we can get that down to a manageable level. Obviously, it comes and goes, but it's definitely a concern, I think, for all of us and something that we're gonna have to continue to engage with them on.
Yeah, just concerned about public safety.
Absolutely.
So you're, I assume that you're using then the corp yard building where there are cages to take the...
Yeah, and they're having to use the inside of the old, the Public Works warehouse, which, as you may recall, wasn't an ideal space. So it's definitely something I think we all need to keep a close eye on and try to support North Bay in whatever way possible.
Great. City clerk might be bringing Parker.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charmaine.
All right, we'll move on to presentation by the Health and Social Policy Institute on second- and third-hand smoke and aerosol exposure and the health effects on community members.
Is that a long enough title?
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to step over the microphone.
Put these on. So, good evening to the council and appreciate the opportunity to be able to present. My name is Gina Lyle Griffin. I'm the project liaison for the Health and Social Policy Institute. And the program is called Communities Addressing Nicotine. Project is funded by the state of California Tobacco Tax of 2016, known as Proposition 56. This program operates under the California Department, the California Tobacco Control Program, which is a division of the California Department of Public Health. Had to get that all out there. I'm gonna be talking, of course, as it says, about second-hand and third-hand smoke and aerosol exposure and health effects for the community. So we all know about second-hand cigarette smoke and most of us are aware of its effects. More is now known about second-hand aerosol and cannabis. You have a packet, and so I have your handouts in order. So the first one I'd like you to look at, if you could, is the one that says Tobacco and Marijuana Second-Hand Smoke. What's the concern? It should be the first one on the packet. First thing I want to say is how is smoking defined in California? Smoke-free laws. California law defines smoking as inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying any lighted or heated tobacco or plant product intended for inhalation, whether natural or synthetic, in any manner or in any form. This includes the use of an electronic smoking device. So that's just important because California changed, they made their own definitions that would work with the laws that are passed in regards to that. So some new studies have shown that emissions from burning cannabis and tobacco cigarettes contain many of the same toxins, irritants, and carcinogens that are including acetylyhide, arsenic, benzene, chromium, formaldehyde, and more. Cannabis second-hand smoke contains eight times as much hydrogen cyanide as tobacco smoke. So for a long time, people weren't as sure what effects second-hand cannabis smoke had. And so there has been some studies because along with cannabis being legalized in certain, in certain states and in certain areas, more studies were conducted on that. So unfortunately, it's showing that it is also very toxic. So please look at the next handout, which says Electronic Smoking Devices and Second-Hand Aerosol. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about aerosol. So a lot of times, people call it vapor or they think that it's sort of like a water vapor, and it's not. It's oil-based. And so there's at least 10 chemicals identified in ESD, which stands for Electronic Smoking Device. Vapes, e-cigarettes, puff bars, and flumes. The last two are newer products that are on the market that people aren't as exposed to. Puff bar is something that is a one-time, well, it's a disposable use, but you can get sometimes 1,000 puffs of high-density nicotine out of them and then they're just disposed, as opposed to a refillable jewel or pod-like type of a device. And they're on the California Proposition 65 list of carcinogens and reproductive toxins. So those 10 chemicals. So I'm gonna look at the thing and point out a couple of others that are in that same. So if you're around somebody who's using an e-cigarette, you're breathing an aerosol of exhaled nicotine ultrafine particles, volatile organic compounds, and other toxins. ESD aerosol is high concentration of ultrafine particles and the particle concentration is higher than in a conventional tobacco cigarette smoke. Okay. There are metals in ESD aerosol, including chromium, nickel, and tin nanoparticles. People exposed to ESD aerosol absorb nicotine, which is measured as COTANINE, with one study showing levels comparable to passive smoking. Chemicals from ESD can drift through multi-unit housing buildings and deposit on surfaces and spaces where ESDs are not being used. Overall, ESDs are a new source of volatile organic compounds, VOCs, and ultrafine fine particles in the indoor environment. So health risks associated with exposure to second- and third-hand smoke and aerosol include asthma, heart attack, lung disease, and cancers. You may have also heard the term third-hand smoke, but do most people really know what it is and how toxic it is? And also how extremely difficult it is to remove from an indoor environment. Third-hand smoke and aerosol, including from cannabis, settles into fabric such as furniture, carpet, and curtains. It attaches to hard and porous surfaces like walls and plastics and wood. Where would you suppose that most people are exposed to second- and third-hand smoke and aerosol? If you had guessed in the home, you're correct. When people come in contact with these residues and particles, it can be inhaled, ingested, or absorbed into the body through the skin. Children are especially at risk, as well as pets. There's been some studies to show that pets, including birds, dogs, snakes, cats, are affected by second-hand smoke as well. Some people... Okay, so the next handout is Everyone Deserves to Have a Healthy Smoke-Free Home. So if you would turn to that one. I just want to point out that any amount of second-hand smoke can be harmful and 41,000 non-smokers die from second-hand smoke exposure each year in the U.S. It is especially dangerous for children and can cause permanent damage to growing lungs. And did you know that people living in apartments are more likely to be exposed to second-hand smoke? Okay, so... Smoke and aerosol can enter the home through vents, electrical outlets, windows, and tiny cracks in walls. Up to 65% of the air in an apartment can come from other units in the building. It's especially dangerous for children, as we said, which it can cause permanent damage to growing lungs. Some people wonder, what if there are no smokers or vape users or cannabis users in my home? Would I be protected? Is my family protected? No, not if you share walls or vents with those that produce second-hand smoke or aerosol, which can become third-hand smoke and residue. No, not if you moved into a home that had previously been inhabited by smokers, vapers, or cannabis users. Yes, if the home was new and no smoking, vaping, or cannabis use is allowed inside or outside within 25 feet. So that's a pretty small amount of homes that are probably available that would meet that category, that criteria. So please turn to the next handout entitled Your Home: Your Right to Know About Third-Hand Smoke. And I will too. California residents are becoming increasingly more concerned about smoking history of homes and rentals due to health risks caused by third-hand smoke residues. A survey in 47 counties showed that 90% believe they have the right to know if they will be exposed to these toxins. However, with housing shortages, some people have no choice but to inhabit affected homes and also be subject to living in shared wall housing with active second-hand smoke exposure. I'm gonna share a local story. This is somebody who lives in Clear Lake. And I am going to share the story while preserving their anonymity. I'm gonna tell you about a married mother of three. She's a homemaker with a part-time side business. She lives in a large multi-unit housing complex that has some subsidized units and some market-rate units. While living in her apartment with her husband and her first two children, she began being constantly barraged by second-hand smoke and vape aerosol coming from below and both sides of her unit. She tried everything, keeping all the windows and doors shut, therefore having no possibility of fresh air circulation. It kept coming through the heating and cooling vents, so they stopped running the air conditioning and heat, but then it kept coming through cracks in the outlets. She saw the effects on her children with coughs, runny noses, watery eyes, as well as feeling them herself. She spoke with management, but they said there's nothing they can do. When she became pregnant with her third child, she became extremely concerned about the effects breathing these toxins in could do to her baby. She asked to move apartments. What was told by management is she cannot move apartments without a doctor's note saying that it was a health-related issue. She obtained a doctor's note and went through the process of uprooting her family and moving to another apartment. The new apartment had no smokers or vape users in adjoining apartments and all was well, until somebody moved in downstairs a few months later. And they smoked cannabis multiple times a day and throughout the evening, and it was the same story again. No open window, no using the balcony, no using the air conditioning. And now the entire family is being exposed to second-hand smoke, aerosol, and cannabis effects. This family is at their wit's end. They reached out to the Tobacco Prevention Education Program under the county, asking for help and guidance. And they were referred to me because of our multi-unit housing objective. They will probably have to move and pay higher rent just to protect their children and themselves. The issue is, there is very little for rent, as we all know, and they will likely not find, not be able to find an affordable single-family home. They may end up in another shared wall situation like a duplex or triplex. The question is, what about their right to choose health for their children? How can a level playing field be created for all residents? How can we be sure that people who choose not to smoke, vape, or use cannabis have that choice and that it's not made for them by others? Others' people's choices are taking away a child's right not to be exposed to deadly toxins that can affect their health permanently. We can see by the local story that I shared that there were months of exposure, worry, stress, discomfort, and moving a whole household, probably twice, just so a family can live without inhaling toxins hourly, yet it was to no avail. So the question is, what can be done? Many cities, counties throughout California have adopted policies to protect citizens from second- and third-hand smoke and aerosol from all sources. Seniors, disabled people, veterans, and children are impacted the most by these protections. Please see the handout entitled Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights, which is U.S. laws for 100% smoke-free multi-unit housing. I'm gonna point out a few things to you there. As of October 1st, 2022, 76 California municipalities have enacted a law at the city or county level that prohibits smoking in 100% of private unit or rental multi-unit housing properties. So I'm gonna point out a couple. I highlighted for you some of the closer-by jurisdictions that have enacted some of these. At the top, in green, you'll see that there are definitions like final effective date of a policy, minimum number of units, that they passed in their jurisdiction that they were going to have a policy be effective for. There's also a place that says includes patio balcony, includes condos. So we have Benicia, Cotati, Crescent City. I want to point out to you also Healdsburg, if I can turn the page. Underneath Healdsburg, number 32, you're gonna see Hercules. As you can see, they chose their smallest unit, minimum number of units to be 10 units. They stand out, most are two. But if a, if a council or a board of supervisors chooses to choose a specific limited amount of where they, what they would want as their minimum amount of units, that would be up to the choice. We also have Nevada, Petaluma, and Ronard Park, and Windsor to look at for examples. So the program that I'm in, we are tasked with providing data, resources, technical institution... I'm sorry, technical assistance institution, sorry about that. As well, we're available to attend ad hoc committees, speak at the council's request if they choose to investigate a multi-unit housing policy for their jurisdiction. Any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Kramer, please.
You mentioned the one lady here in Clear Lake.
Yes.
Do you know of others?
Yes.
About how many are in your area?
We get, I used to work for the county. So historically, I'm speaking not for the county, but just from the experience of being there. We got calls a lot, and they were from, a lot of times, it was seniors. I can remember at least three... I can remember at least three or four seniors who had health issues, and there was smoking happening all around them. And if they happened to live in one of the multi-unit housing complexes that didn't have it, they were asking, "Aren't there any laws? Is there something we can do?" And really, there's not.
Number-wise, can you think 100, 50, 200?
I mean, if I'm thinking of the whole county, I would say probably, we probably got 50 calls. But if we went and presented in any, anywhere about second-hand smoke, people would ask us about it. We did get a lot of calls from the mobile home parks, but those aren't considered multi-unit housing, and there was a lot of issues there as well. And even, you know, they're not sharing walls, but they're very close together. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor Perdor.
So, I'm curious, do you have any personal familiarity with the ordinance that were passed in those other jurisdictions? Do you know if those units were, say, segregated away in separate building units? Or how did they separate those rental?
Generally, the ordinances or policies that I'm aware of were passed for a jurisdiction, and it covered all multi-unit housing. Most of them that you can see on that list, it was if it was two or more, so it wouldn't separate like wings or specific areas of a complex. It would be that in our county or in our city, all of the... And right now, in Clear Lake, you know, you guys have a lot of multi-unit housing, and you have more coming, and it's about half and half. So, if a program is HUD, they, by law, you know, the federal government passed, you know, any HUD-funded or HUD-housing has to be 100% tobacco-free. So, they also put out a toolkit, and they also, part of their campaign, was to say that everybody, everyone should go over to that, because why should there be disparity? I mean, we want a level playing field for everybody.
How does that relate to cannabis and e-cigarette use? Are those included in that?
In California, because of the definition of what smoking is, depending on how the ordinance is written. Now, I do believe that there are some that have excluded medical marijuana use, but there is also, the other ways that that has been addressed is by having a designated area, outside, outside, within a certain amount of feet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gossamer, woman Overton.
Okay, since, I'm going to say, almost, at least 98% of our apartment complexes are HUD, so they have the choice to, of course, not have smoking. So, I know that, I run the senior center, and I know across there, they can't smoke. So, and almost all apartments have the right to say it's a non-smoking.
True.
Even private-owned ones, so to me is, that's their judgment. Living in your own house does not mean you're not going to get to smoke. I live in my own house, and I had to close my windows the other day because of marijuana. So, just because you live in your own house doesn't mean you're going to get away from it. You're not, you know? So, I think it's just here, and I think that, that, that since most all of ours are HUD, they shouldn't, they should be smoke-free anyway.
They're not, most of them aren't, actually. I've visited many of them.
They're low-income, they're funded by the state, so they, they should be following the state laws.
Well, it's not a state law, it's a federal. Yeah.
Well, then, maybe the state should kick in and make the law.
Well, or maybe a jurisdiction, if they have a lot of multi-unit housing, you know, if they feel that that would...
But I don't, I don't think you're going to get away from it from just like moving into a house. It's not, it's not, you're never, you're never going to get away from it.
Wasn't suggesting that, yeah.
So, so, because, I mean, I think marijuana is probably more that I smell than anything anymore, so... And the vaping of the cigarettes, so, you know, I don't, I don't think that's going to go away with even a law, it's not going to, I don't think it's going to make a difference. I think it's just another, another thing to put in place that's going to be sitting on the books, and nothing's going to happen with it. I think it's really up to the apartment owners to convince them to make their places smoke-free.
If the council would like to have some data about, you know, jurisdictions that have gone smoke-free with their multi-unit housing, if they would like some information from any multi-unit housing that is smoke-free to show what differences it has made, I'd be happy to look some of that up for you.
Thank you.
That would be welcome.
Maybe reaching out.
Okay.
Thanks.
That sounds great.
Thank you again, Jenna.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you once a year, maybe next year will be a little bit less.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
All right, we go to item number three, presentation by the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation on bioenergy and wildlife mitigation. Do we have somebody here for that item? Is it online? Madam Clerk? Mr. Flora?
Yeah, we have multiple people on Zoom, so we'll get them queued up here.
If we're ready, I can begin, if the council is ready.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Our tribal environmental director, as well as our CEO for Clean Carbon Corporation. In addition, I have our main consultant, Jeff Durche, with AmbiBio Energy. What we'd like to do is provide you a brief, yet poignant presentation on our foray into the energy industry. And I want to present or provide answers to three questions. One, why Scotts Valley banned Homo Indians? Two, what is bioenergy? And three, what are the more specific technical aspects of bioenergy as it applies to here in Lake County? So, to start with, I joined Scotts Valley about five years ago, and shortly thereafter... Native American tribes, as well as others, had an opportunity to understand how to decide whether or not bioenergy made sense for them. And so, we developed through a contract with the California Energy Commission, coupled with the Strategic Growth Council of California, a bioenergy feasibility toolkit, which gives any consumer of energy the opportunity to act, which is by... ......... So, in terms of bioenergy, you provide... So, yeah, I hope that gives you simple, but clear answers, the difference between our bioenergy program and a biomass program, which is not what we're doing in this county. We are looking at bioenergy as a hybrid of paralysis and gasification, as I indicated in the beginning. So, the next slide, please. So, why bio... As you know, it allows us to farm, and both backyard gardens, as well, the ability to contain water there by using less water and getting the maximum value out of that water. It also provides us the ability to address what we know is a catastrophic problem here in Lake County, and that is the huge numbers of trees and other material that now has no commercial value and needs to be disposed of in a positively recyclable way. Our alternatives are usually basically considered to be three. The first option is to burn that kind of material. Obviously, burning of that material releases carbon dioxide into the air and doesn't enhance our air quality, but negates that air quality and doesn't do anything to address climate change. The other option is to chip the material and leave it on-site, on top of the ground. Again, that sounds great, except the fact that it also creates the release of carbon dioxide. And over time, obviously, it's slower pace than it, burning does, but nevertheless, that same amount of carbon dioxide is released over time into the atmosphere. So, by using that non-commercial quality, carbon-based material, forest material, we are able to transform it into a viable commodity that, again, creates that carbon-naked perspective that we like to have. And at the same time, it takes advantage of that, that material that we need to get rid of in the, both in our forests, whether it be the U.S. forests, or the BLM, or the wild wilderness urban interface area, which so many of us live in these days. We can also... ... Right now, have a waste product in the share. That waste product is a cost to them with no value. They have to dispose of it. It creates a carbon footprint increase by the fact that they have to transfer it to a landfill or some other disposable site, and those are costs associated. We can take that same carbon material right on-site, use it to generate electricity, and...
We lost you. We did? We lost your audio? Okay.
Am I back?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. So, for the... That are available here and is where syngas can be used to generate other additional products besides just pure energy or power to power a plant. So, Jeff, if you'd like to talk about those, that would be great.
Sure. The primary application is a gas, like electric gas, which can be used to make electricity. But if you think about what bioenergy is, it's basically making hydrocarbons out of carbon in the environment. So wood chips from forest management, walnut shells from walnut processing. And those hydrocarbons can be manipulated in many ways. And as you see on the graph, a conversion to pure hydrogen is one solution. It's about the ratios that you make to make pure hydrogen. You're basically taking a syngas, which is equal parts hydrogen and carbon monoxide typically, and purifying it. You can mix it with water to convert the CO to additional hydrogen and then purify it into a transportation fuel. Of interest to us is Lake County and the Lake Transit's interest to do hydrogen buses. So it would be a really terrific thing to create hydrogen in the county to power those buses. Additionally, a simple approach with partner technology is to upgrade the hydrogen to about 1.8 to two times the amount of carbon monoxide. And that fits with commercial available technology to create a drop-in renewable diesel. So basically, a liquid fuel that could run diesel generators, diesel buses, diesel trucks. And also, to the extent the scale works, it can make a drop-in strategic aviation fuel. So these are additional applications that are available in the future. For now, waste energy and the support of microgrids that complements wind and solar is the immediate opportunity and the fuel and create fuel for vehicles and industry is the future. But all of these processes are net carbon negative in the 20% to 30% of the conversion process keeps a fixed carbon, which can go, is called biochar, and it can be field applied, it can be a soil amendment, and it has, you know, a lifetime of thousands of years. So that carbon does not release back into the environment. So Tom, if you want me to continue, I think the basic genesis or the interest of Scotts Valley is economic development, but it's also supporting the community and the viability and need, frankly, for these types of small-scale distributed systems can support the community and either local load or sale under the wholesale biomass tariff around the county. And so we, in consultation with the tribe, have looked at multiple sites. And what we do is take a spiral approach to site review. We think that the feedstock in the county with the plethora of forestry management going on is given. The tribe has formed an approach to have centralized management of that and processing of that material so it could be delivered to any site without the need for storage or processing on site. So, but we need to look at zoning and permitting. This isn't solar panels on your roof, so it can't be anywhere. And the other additional big impact we look for is the grid implications. And so in the city of Clear Lake, for example, we've identified corridors of opportunity. And we can do that around the county, and we have. And so, Tom, you want to jump in there?
No, I think you're doing a great job.
Okay. So, as I said, once we've found the site, we did look at zoning, and these things aren't linear, they're circular, as I say. We use a spiral model. And so we can winnow down the viable applications. And at the basis, you know, we would look at a site load. To serve a local load is awesome, like a hotel casino or a community center or a cold storage facility. These things use a lot of power and could use the power on site or it can be exported. And we can identify where those opportunities exist. And overlaying that is trust or fee land, but it's really the issue of rolling these things together and, you know, the electricity sale and the biochar sales are really part of a financial study that's downstream from this discussion. We wanted just to give you the information about our interests and goals and share so that if we can collaborate on site selection, that would be of interest, I think, to us. And this is a pretty distorted graphic, I apologize for that, but it's an overview of obviously the Clear Lake area and most of Lake County. And so it's ideally suited for, you know, wood processing centers in the north and south county and potentially other areas. And you can see the pin drops where we think there are viable potential bioenergy project opportunities. And this is not mutually exclusive, for sure. But Tom, you should mention Red Hills and any of the others that you'd like to elaborate on here.
Well, I think what is important to understand is our system, as we've tried to- At a set tariff rate for that product, which is clearly within that 12 to 20 cents per kilowatt range. You can see that we write above that in the city yard of Clear Lake, looking around and at it. The revenue that you can generate and the plants become inefficient from a cost perspective. So those are the things that we look at when we look at, again, we look at a demand or a demand or a consumer of that electricity and scale to that electricity, providing it on a 24-hour basis. That gives them that resilience that needed particularly when we know that PPS can happen. There's an alert right now that's applying to Lake County. We may lose power in the next, this upcoming weekend for an indefinite period of time. That has an impact on anybody who's running an operation, and our systems will be independent of that system. That also creates the independence from the major utility operator, in our case PG&E, which many people in the county have expressed desire that we need to certainly be able to be minimizing our reliance on PG&E. And our system is just one of the ways that that can happen. So those are some of the facts that we like to make known in our process. Our plants are also take up very small space, no more than 10,000 square feet would be the large-sized plant compared to one of our plants running around 300 kilowatt hours 24/7 is equivalent to a 1 megawatt solar plant operation. That solar plant operation would take three acres of land, which could be better used for other sources, particularly in areas that we have here in Clear Lake, in Lake County. So I'm not sure we have answered all your questions, so we're happy to sit here and respond to any questions that you may have asked would provide you more clarification.
We have a question from Councilman Kramer.
Yes, Councilman Kramer.
Thank you. I've heard, this gave, this presentation was a lot more detailed than what I've heard in the RRA meetings of the last few weeks. So I appreciate that. I actually wanted to talk, I think Terry was going to help me with some, probably some of what you're giving me now. But specifically, you've mentioned three, 10,000 square foot for a plant for 200 kilowatts up to three acres for a megawatt. Does that, did I understand that correctly? Does that include?
No.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, the comparison was that 200 kilowatts operating 24/7 is equivalent to 1 megawatt of solar. So solar only generates power about six hours a day versus 24 hours for bioenergy.
Got it.
Is that, yeah.
So in, obviously, to create biochar, biomass, you're going to have to bring in, I'm assuming, chipped product. So what's that? How much room would the storage of that take prior to it being, running through the burner or the gas fire? And then the product that comes out the other end, I don't think you're going to be running, taking that off-site every day. So have you, so what's, so what would be the total size of a plant of 200 kilowatts and/or 1 megawatt in size? And then the next question is, I think you were talking about either creating hydrogen for our buses, for our Lake Transit, or, anyway, creating that or creating power. If you're creating power, now, did I understand, you say in Clear Lake, you would probably just put it into the PG&E transmission system, which runs through our avenues? Is that kind of what you were thinking there or do you have some other places it's going to go?
So you got- The site itself does not have to experience that program or process.
So how many of those?
Filtration system. We are currently looking at a project where we'll be using carbon, the biochar, as a filtration medium for waters coming into the Clear Lake to see if we can pull out the phosphorus before it enters the lake. If that is the case, we now have a charged biochar that is even more valuable as a soil amendment. We probably recognize that that chip, that load will be taken away at a minimum once per day, possibly once every other day, depending on the size of the plant. The bigger the plant, the more biochar that is created. So I think that answers your first question. I think Jeff needs to answer your question around hydrogen.
So let me answer.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I honestly, I didn't catch the question about hydrogen. Let me answer the question about what to do with the electricity because I think hydrogen fueling stations aren't really today's problem in Lake County. I think PG&E and energy resilience and, you know, security from PSPSs are more urgent. So there's two ways to use the electricity. One is a wholesale sale. Red Hills is a 200-kilowatt system with a power purchase agreement to sell wholesale to PG&E at almost 20 cents per kilowatt hour. So that's a state law and a state program that the three major utilities are required to operate under. The second application is to serve a local load. So I won't speak for Robinson Rancheria or Middletowns, Twin Pines, but those type of locations use a lot of power. And one of the systems could fully offload their power requirement in what's known as a net metering installation, where the power is basically used on site. It might leak into the grid back and forth, but there's a contract for the power requirement, and that's how the system is sort of paid for and monetized. So those are the two examples. Other than doing that sort of net metering without exporting, that would be a third approach, but it's really just a variation on the theme. Could you please ask the third question?
I forgot what it was. Let me, let me though go back and just ask for some clarification on the materials per day and the 20, the one truck, 20-foot van, so I'm guessing that's, what, 10 tons, maybe five tons a day coming in?
Right. We would use 28 or 45-foot trucks. The 28 are preferred because it's just more facile. So if that was a 200-kilowatt system, that truck would sit there for four days approximately.
It would take four days for that truck to be, for the material to be used out of one truck?
Right, for the smallest system that we would do, yes.
How about the megawatt? How about the 1 megawatt? The 200-kilowatt is, it really is a small system. I mean, we have a 200-kilowatt generator at our community center for basically one building or three buildings in emergency. So the megawatt one sounds like it would be the more viable to really sell a significant amount of electricity.
Right. Well, we've done, as Tom mentioned, for the strategic growth council, we did a feasibility study for Robinson Rancheria, and we determined that we could offset 99% of their electricity use with a 350-kilowatt system. And again, that's net metering. So it's pushing power onto the grid at night when the need's not there, and then they're using it on-site locally. So it's just like with solar, if you've ever had someone try to study solar, they do all this analysis about power flow and things like that. But it's basically linear. The power in a pound of wood chips is the same, you know, it varies on average, but it's basically the same. So a 1-megawatt system would be five times a 200-kilowatt system. So you basically would design a truck that at least was one a day, and then the biochar would be trucked away, you know, every, we're probably smaller trailers for the biochar and do it once a day, but it could be up to once every three days. But as you can see, it really depends, and the cost of the system depends as well based on, you know, how much infrastructure needs to be built versus just the core energy equipment.
And then one last question. The materials you're using, obviously, there's a lot of dead and dying pine trees and around the county. I guess I'm assuming they'd be part of it. I guess I'm assuming they'd be part of it. You mentioned walnut shells. And then I think somewhere, I guess when I was at our Risk Reduction Authority meeting, I thought I saw brush as being a potential source of, of chips as well. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
You mean the brush from yard trim?
Brush from brush, yeah.
Brush from brush, absolutely, yeah. So we're, we're testing a variety of feedstocks for flowability, for gasability, a number of things, from rice hulls to prune pits, to mixed oak and pine, to hemp, and just the, the list goes on. But the organic material in the environment, if it's, if it doesn't have a commercial use, and it's not toxic, or, you know, have halides or dangerous chemicals in it, is, is a viable source.
What's the furthest you should, that you can economically transport it to the biochar, biomass facility?
Yeah, I mean, the, every, every $10 per ton in the feedstock adds, you know, takes, takes about, you know, takes away from the profitability, I would say, on the order of a penny per kilowatt hour. So typically, about $40 to $50 a ton is, is where you're, you're starting to break the economic viability. But, but that's, you know, that's, that's a long distance. You have to factor in processing and other things into that as well. But in the, in the county, I don't think that the distance from Upper Lake to, to Middletown is, is an issue at all. You know, if you're going, you know, from, from Middletown north to Ukiah or, you know, somewhere further north, then, then it starts to become an issue. And I, I wish I would be more specific to answer that, but I'd have to, I'd have to do the economic analysis based on a specific.
I, I can ask a question later. Councilman Claffey has another question.
Other question on noise pollution. So the, the, a plant of, of the size that you're, you're building in Red Hills compared to the plant that would be one megawatt, what, what type of impact does that have? What does it sound like to, to the neighborhood?
Yeah, so it, great question, and that's why we try to mention in our sort of circular process that zoning and permitting is an issue. You know, we would definitely not think about putting this anywhere that's not in a commercial, at least, and preferably industrial or, or a remote ag type of location. It wouldn't be at retail, it wouldn't be in residential at all. And the, the answer, more specific answer is that the, the micro turbines that we sort of favor are very, they're very nimble generators, and they're fairly quiet. So 60, 70 dB, to the extent you have a 200-kilowatt system is one of those, a megawatt would be five of those. I don't think you really generate more than the 60 dB because they're all humming at the same rate. And so there's other elements to, to the noise production, but the fact that you're not grinding and chipping wood onsite, that it's just trucks coming in and out, takes away a large impediment that we found at Red Hills, and that's why we've sort of worked, worked around that. So the only other way I can answer the question is the, the distance from the, the noise generator to the, the auditory receptor is a, is a big factor. And, you know, every, every 10 meters or so, you're dropping dBs. And so distance matters. At Red Hills, where, I think Tom can correct me, but at least 800 to 1,000 feet from any noise receptor. And that, that makes us, you know, pass any, any Lake County ordinance that you could think of.
We'd have no more questions from council. So thank you very much for your presentation. Very educational. And do I understand that you're just in the process of, of building your first pilot program? Is that correct?
That's correct. Here in the county, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor Suton. And thank you for spending the time with us and learning a bit more about. Any other future questions come up, please have, please feel free to reach out to me. And if I can't answer them, well, I will direct them and get you the answers that you're looking for.
Thank you very much. All right, we go to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda, that is, within the, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on any non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any B? Please, Barbara, come to the mic, please.
My name is Barbara Christwitz, and I live in Clear Lake, 3568 Vista Street. I'm commenting on, about a month ago, going, going past the bridge near Redbud Library and seeing a tent all, all set up down there with people in it. So I went, I can, proceeded to, to Judge's Breakfast, and, and there was Chief White, and I mentioned that to him. And when I came back an hour later, everything was gone. So he had called code enforcement, he had called police to take care of that matter. Unfortunately, then, the next day or in the next couple of days, the tent was a few, was several hundred yards away. And, and so anyway, my friend and I took a tour of the creek bed there between the library and Calvary Chapel. There are, there are three unhoused encampments, and then, then there's a fellow that I got to know named Robert, who's now under the bridge with all kinds of stuff. And so I talked to him, and I said, so you know about Hope Center? And, oh, yeah, he, he had been expelled from Hope Center. It didn't work out for him. So anyway, we all know that, that it's, we, it's a problem in the creek bed. And so then my, my thought is, now, now what do we do as a town? Because it's, it's, it just creates garbage and everything. So I'm hoping that we will, as a city, create a tent city for those that, that Hope Center does not work out for, where there would be a water spigot, a dumpster, a porta potty, 24-hour supervision, and a lockbox for people's stuff. So that's, that's what I'm talking about. And in the meantime, I'm, I'm hoping that there would be some police supervision to tell people they have to move along. They, they're not going away. They, they will be somewhere. So anyway, that's, that's my three minutes. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Coker, you have a couple of items that you want to address the city council with? I see three here.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
My name is Robert Coker. I'm a citizen of Clear Lake and a business owner also. My first concern is the garbage prices. Since enacted that it was mandatory that every resident has garbage, it started at $60, now it's at $80. I went to the dumps last week with a minimum, and it was $10. So for Bunny and I, it would cost me $20 a month to go to the dumps. Recyclables are free, and Quackin Bush is $15 for minimal. So I don't know, something's got to be done because there's a lot of folks in this city that can't afford the $80 a month. So that's what I have to say about the garbage. The next one is about the old hickory sheds. I have a, a number of customers that want to put sheds on their empty property, the minimum of a 10 by 12, so they can clear their land, so they don't have to pack up their tools every Sunday, drive back to where they live, pack them up Friday to come back up and clear their property. So I would like to find out if there's something that we can do about having a minimum-size shed, like the 120 that's on the books, so they can put it on their property and not worry about having to take the stuff home every Friday or Sunday, whenever they come up. Now, my third one is about a lady that lives at the old Jules' property. She's killing my business. The words that come out of that lady's mouth are some of the worst words I have ever heard. We have families that come. They unload their kids out of the car. Soon as she sees them, she's at the edge of the street screaming some of the worst words you've ever heard. I've called the police numerous times. They tell me that the only thing I can do is take a video of her when she threatens to fight me. This is uncalled for. I'm losing crazy amount of money because a lot of people come from out of town, they pull up, they unload their kids, and she starts screaming about pedophiles doing things that you couldn't imagine. They load their kids right back up in the car and leave. So something's got to be done about that lady. I don't know what, and I really don't care, but it's got to be done. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anymore in the audience here? If not, is there anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
There's one hand raised on Zoom.
Please let him proceed.
Hi, this is Elizabeth with Lake County News. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Elizabeth.
Okay.
Was there an opportunity for the public to ask that?
I think they left a meeting already, but if they're still around, I don't know if they're still on, on Zoom or not. No, they're.
Okay, well, my question is for you then. My question is, are they asking the city for a specific site? Because tonight, they showed a map that had a whole bunch of sites on it. I've been asking for specific sites from them, and they have refused to give them. And tonight, they come in with a map. So are they asking specific sites from the city?
No, they're not.
Okay. We'd like to know what they have cooked up for us because they're not talking to us. So I'd like to know who they're actually talking to and what sites have been vetted and confirmed.
The way I understand it, Elizabeth, they're working on one specific site in the Red Hills. I don't have no idea where it is, but that's the only place they are trying to get something going. That's my understanding.
They own a piece of property that's caddy corn from Kids Corner. There's an orchard there, so I'm assuming that's the property they're working on. Just to add a little bit, I mean, we have talked to Mr. Jordan a few times, and, and he's expressed interest in some sites around here. You know, he had the Public Works Yard on his, on his map, and we let him know that, you know, that wasn't something that was going to work for the city, and that we would let him know if we had any ideas on, on something that might be feasible here, but.
So it sounds like they have one site, specific sites, that they're trying to get going, but that's all I really know from. Any more questions, Elizabeth?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go to item number G, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Anybody wants to pull an item on this? If not, we'll move on. Any public wants to pull on any item of this? If not, we'll take it back to the council. Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
That is as amended?
As amended.
Okay, very good.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Claffey and a second by Councilwoman Overton. You want to try the electronic voting again? There we go. Voting doesn't seem to be open. Okay, a vote call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move on. Go to item number 10, business. Mr. Flora.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mayor, so I just, we had a request to remove this from the agenda, but I think that it would be helpful to give the council just a tiny bit of background before any decisions are made. So, you know, based on kind of the, the experience in tribal relationships and the consultation process, changing a little bit over time and working with different tribes on different projects, we felt like that some of the best practices out there were to have more of a consistent policy framework for tribal consultation and, and, and dealing with tribal cultural resources within our jurisdiction. And so we hired ECorp Consulting, who has developed a number of these across California, to do one here. Our original intention was to have this policy as an interim policy and then invite all the tribes that have interest in the, you know, their historical lands being within Clear Lake's jurisdiction to kind of work out some of the details. We thought there was value in having that interim policy in place because we have a lot of projects going on, and it would help sort of guide that. We had a consultation with the Coy tribe earlier today on a specific project. Of course, we had sent this to them a few days back, as well as the other tribes, and their request of the council is that there not be any action taken on even the interim policy tonight. They identified a, a few things that they think this policy needs to be updated on. So we've shared that with our consultant, and our hope would be, well, staff's recommendation would still be to come back at a future meeting with an interim policy. But we also want to develop sort of a path and a framework to meet with all the tribes, go over this, and have a final policy that's in place for the future. And sort of in addition to that, I also had a meeting with the City of Lakeport and the county earlier this week, I think it was, to talk about this. They're also very interested in taking a similar approach. There was some interest in trying to do this countywide. At the same time, I don't know if that's really feasible or not, or how long that may drag the process out, but I told them that we'd be happy to discuss that with them. So, I mean, anyway, that's kind of where we are. I'm not asking the council to take any action tonight on this, but I'm happy to try and address any questions if you would like. And we were going to have our consultant onboard, but because of this recommendation, we don't have her here tonight to address any specific question.
Councilman Kramer.
So you're asking us to basically table this?
Yeah. Okay. Vice Mayor Perdop.
Do you know when you'll bring, do you know when you'll be bringing it back to us?
Not really for sure. We'll have to talk to our consultant and, and go from there. I would still like to do something before the end of the year, but we'll see.
We'll open the public hearing. Any comments from our Coy Nation? If not, do we have any public comment on, on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
There's one hand raised on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Oh, if, if Robert wants to say so, let's, good Zoom first. Thank you.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Sorry, I thought Robert was speaking.
There's no action taken on it. It's not interim, it's just no action today?
No, there is no action today.
Okay.
Thank you. Robert, you had some, if you want to make a comment?
Robert, you had some, if you want to make a comment?
Robert Gary, how are all of you? My name is Robert Gary. Born and raised here, um, in Lake County, um, from Clear Lake Oaks. Graduated from here, um, came back, worked for here. I'm also the tribal historic preservation officer and the, uh, director of cultural resources for the Abemetol Pomo. Um, also, uh, work with the Coy Nation. Um, I just wanted to put my, um, input, I think, on this document. I reviewed it, went through it. Um, it is, it does need to be updated. There have, there are actually new laws that have been put into place, um, since, um, the creation of this document that I think need to, that address tribal consultation that are not in this document and how the process goes for that. There are a few, I want to say about three or four laws that are not a part of this document. So I think it's really important that we update, update this document, um, also with consultation, I think, with the tribes. You know, different tribal, you know, cultural, um, uh, resources on different areas. Um, I think tribal needs, um, different cultural values and different cultural systems, different political systems. And I think all those need to actually come to the table to be able to create a really good document for projects that happen, um, in the City of Clear Lake and that we could all work together to be able to create a process that really kind of streamlines, I think, projects that happen where both, um, the city feels good about what's happening and then that the tribes know that the tribal cultural resources are being protected during those projects. So, uh, that's my comment.
Thank you, Robert. Any more public comment? Mr. Dino Beltran.
You sound a little brody on that one. Good evening, everybody. How are you? I'm Dino Beltran with the Coy Nation. I appreciate you. Good to see you. Um, I, I think the intent of what's been brought forward today is, is, is a nice intent. Um, I think it was more of a boilerplate document that was brought to us. And I think along with what Robert is saying, the municipality that that came from has a whole different set of cultural resource impacts on that particular city. This one here is a tremendous, has a lot of tremendous impacts here. So I think, um, in tandem with Robert said, having the, uh, the input from the tribe from the onset will be very helpful to you. So you won't be hamstrung. I think even though this was intended to be an interim process, there's already another process in play that helps the city, and it's AB 52. So when you follow Senate Bill AB 52 in earnest, the, um, the tribal resources would be respected from that point. But having this policy is a, a nice layer on top of that. So thank you for that, and I appreciate tonight. Oh, and I'm glad that they followed the, uh, the input of their, of your new, um, consultant, Lisa Westwood. It was her, it was her, uh, suggestion to pull it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? We'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Ron Montez. I'm the tribal historic preservation officer for the Big Valley Band of Pomu Indians. But I was raised in, in Clear Lake Oaks on the Elem Indian Colony.
I think we went to school together, Ron.
Yeah, I think so. We graduated in 68.
I was 66.
I was there, but you're, yeah. And also, um, graduate of Lower Lake High. Go Trojans. I just wanted to say that, uh, along with what, uh, has been spoken here already tonight, is just to point out again that each tribe is a separate individual nation with their own, um, little quirks and their own desires and their own way of communicating with people and dealing with people. Although we may be called Pomo, that was an archaeologist person who named us all that. He just threw everybody in because our language was similar, but it's not really similar. But being Pomo here in Clear Lake and Pomo in Lakeport is different. Here, when I was raised in, in Elem, there was no electricity or water. There was electricity and water in Lakeport. And they went to school. Uh, my cousins and relatives went to school there with the ability to have nice dress pressed clothes. I mean, I had to heat an iron on a wood stove to press my clothes to, to go to school. And so there's a whole difference in all of us around this lake. And, uh, we may have similar languages. This is southeastern Pomo. I'm eastern Pomo from that side. And we have different histories because of how they were, my cousins and relatives were treated on this side of the lake and how my relatives were treated on that side of the lake. So we are vastly different in those things. And, uh, we're closer to Kanaktae. They're over here, but they named it Kanaktae. And so, um, those things need to be taken into consideration whenever you're coming up with any consultation policies. Because one set of rules, um, may not always address everything that's needed. And so I'm just here to support Coy Nation and Robert from, um, Elem and also the Pomo people from, uh, Big Valley. And I know that, uh, we are all very proud that we have, uh, made it through all these thousands of years of our ancestors. And we take pride in that. And so we would just like to be at the table when you discuss things for our input. Most of the time I go to any of these meetings, we hear a perspective that comes across that's not normally our perspective, because we see things just a little different. And sometimes we don't say anything, and so you don't know. But I just wanted to remind you that we have some history of being in this county, in this city. When it used to be called the Highlands. They had an arcades right across the street over there. They used to play those penny arcades. A and W right down the corner. Yeah, and, yeah. I'm very familiar with this place. So I, I would like to just, again, encourage you to keep that in mind, that we are all different and our values may be different also. And the way that we, we relate may be a little different. And so in your, trying to get your policies together, uh, just keep that in mind, because we see things a little different. Uh, but we want to have a working relationship with you, because this is our home. It's been here before Clear Lake was here. And so we are concerned about everything that happens on these lands and this water and the trees and animals. Because that's what we're placed here to do, was to preserve and take care of them. So any decisions that you guys make, it impacts us and we would really like to be side by side with you in those decision-making things, uh, situations, just so that you could hear from our perspective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Any additional comments from the public? If not, we close the public hearing now and bring it back to the council. So no action is required on this. All right.
Action to table it?
You don't need to.
Don't need to, okay.
Okay, we go to item number 11. Authorization of a joint use agreement with Kanaktae Unified School District for the use of the Clear Lake Youth Center for Youth and Recreation Oriented Activities. Mr. Flora.
I think, uh, Ms. Swanson's going to present the staff report on this item.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor and council members, your council is being asked to approve a joint use agreement with Kanaktae Unified School District for the use of the Clear Lake Youth Center for Youth and Recreation Activities and authorize the city manager to negotiate the final agreement. For background, in June, your council approved the formation of the Recreation and Events Division of the Administrative Services Department with the intention of increasing public engagement and activities through the creation of recreation programs and community events. Staff has formed a valuable partnership with Kanaktae Unified School District to jointly bring those programs to fruition. KUSD has preliminarily agreed to assist with the much-needed rehabilitation of the youth center in return for cooperative use for planned after-school activities, youth camps, and a city and district employee daycare. If your council approves this agreement, Superintendent Salado will present the agreement to Kanaktae Unified School District Board for their consideration. Staff asks that your council authorize the city manager to negotiate the final agreement based on further input if necessary minor legal and technical changes are suggested. And I see Superintendent Salado is present and we're available for questions.
Okay, we have any questions for, for staff? Councilwoman Overton.
I don't see an agreement in here. Am I missing it?
Can you refresh?
Refresh?
I see, I mean, I just.
Did you open the right documents?
Yeah, I, I opened on the thing and it just says the.
You're right, it's, it's not attached. It shows that it's not.
If you refresh, it's in there.
Oh, okay.
What is the refresh note? Okay. I don't see it either.
Oh, on the web.
Where?
Just.
Oh, I.
This one?
Nope, top left.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Yeah, I did, and it didn't, I lost it all.
Oh, that one, sorry.
Yep. There you go, okay.
Okay, that doesn't work.
I was gonna say, I had just refreshed just a few minutes ago, so she must have just got it up there.
Now I have nothing.
So sorry, because I haven't, I haven't been able to read it.
All right, this is what I have right now. God bless. Okay.
Think our illustrious superintendent would like to.
I think you need to educate us on how to refresh, if you could.
Please.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city team. I think you all know me, Becky Salado. I'm the superintendent for Kanaktae Unified School District. And I just wanted to, um, I thank you for your time tonight and wanted to assure you that, um, on behalf of our school board, we are super excited about this and I appreciate your consideration in moving forward. I think this joint use agreement, um, is something that we can work on together and will both benefit the city, uh, and the school district, and obviously, most important, our youth. I, and so I encourage you. I hope it, it is approved. Um, if approved here, we'll, we'll be taking it next Wednesday to our board. Um, and on aside from that, I just really wanted to shout out, um, city manager, uh, Flora and his team, Melissa and Tina have just been wonderful working on this project. You know, it's kind of a out-of-the-box idea that we had and, and the process moving forward has been wonderful. On behalf of our kids, I really want to say that we truly appreciate the continued support always from the City of Clear Lake. And this is another great example of how you support our youth, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Superintendent.
And if there's any questions that I can help on.
What activities do you envision going in there?
Um, we've met, actually, um, Tina came and met with my principals and myself, and we've talked about, um, camps, possibly youth camps, um, during intercession breaks, during spring breaks, during the summer, on one end of the building, possibly after school activities. Um, and on the other end, as we, it was discussed, it will be a daycare center for both, um, city employees. We'll have slots as well as our, our employees, our teachers and classified staff. We're hoping to get approval, um, on that to have both infant and toddler daycare, which is greatly needed, I'm sure you all know, in this area. Uh, most of our employees and your employees don't, uh, fall above the, um, area where they can get most of the daycare, subsidized daycare that's in this area. So this is a great need to help us, um, retain and hire good quality staff.
Councilman Claffey, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at, um, section four here on maintenance. A lot of this is to refurbish the facility. Uh, who's going to be the lead agency in terms of, uh, ongoing maintenance?
Um, I think that's probably one of the things we can, we'll continue to negotiate. I believe the city was going to take the lead and will support. Um, again, great working relationship. We've had our crews, I'm a little nervous. My crews are like falling in love with your team, so they've been over to look at, um, repairs already. Um, I, I have very solid direction from my board that, uh, you know, we can do as much as, as is needed to support.
Councilman Kramer.
Uh, yes, Superintendent Salado, I'm not used to calling you that.
I know.
But, um, what percentage of time do you expect to use the facility?
So the facility is divided into two ends and so, um, and you know I'm not going to know the direction, but if I'm looking this way, the right side, um, has two areas, which were the, um, boxing facility was located before. And we're hoping that that can be our daycare center, because it's kind of a nice divide of two rooms. So it will allow, um, per licensing, we have to separate, um, infant to toddler daycare. So we're hoping to use that end, which would be a daily use. Um, we're looking at licensing from probably seven to five, which we think would fit both needs, um, for our employees. The other side would be more of the joint use with, with your, your recreation department as well as our after-school programs and summer activities. And, and it would still allow the city.
Councilwoman Overton is next.
I wasn't quite through with my question, but, uh, so that's all your use. I, I think in here it did talk about, uh, the use by other, other users. What percentage of the time do you think, what's that split look like? And, and what parts would they use? They wouldn't use the daycare center, I guess.
Right, I, I think the only thing for us that would be, kind of have to be off limits because of licensing would be the daycare. Um, but the other side is a large rec room and, and I think, you know, we would be using. I, I'm sure that's something we'll work out and get a schedule put up, but, um, I don't see why there would be any reason when we're not, you know. I think we would use it after school sometimes and really at the bigger holidays when we don't have after-school activities going on on our sites, when our sites are closed down. We had an intercession last week, so that would have been a perfect time for a week of camp.
So the idea that you would be the primary user and the others, non-schools, you would be the, the secondary user of the facility?
I mean, this isn't a, this isn't an agreement where we're leasing the building to the school district and they're the primary user, really. They would be the primary user of the daycare area and then it would, it's, it's a joint use agreement. So, um, you know, we would share as needed as new programs are developed and so forth.
Thank you. Councilwoman Overton.
Okay, so, um, so I just want to get this straight. I'm excited. This is exactly what I would like to do with this youth center. I, I, you know, when I walked away from it, I had to. Uh, you know, this is kind of the things that I were hoping for was that, that we would all connect and, and make something happen here. I would really like to see, um, the school think about when we do have these breaks and stuff, how can we have an after-school program there? Because one of the things is like a people like, oh my God, my kids are home for a week. I don't know what I'm going to do. I have no daycare. And they, a lot of them had to take off of work, you know, and they can lose their jobs from that. So I'd really like to see us work on a basis of that. I'm excited that somebody's finally going to put that sidewalk in on the side. I wanted that done, but I didn't have the money to get it done. So, uh, uh, you know, it looks like everything you're doing here is just exactly what I was hoping for the youth center when I developed it. So I am excited that, uh, we're making this connection and I think this is going to be really good for our community. And, and like I said, I did, would like to see a after-school program, if nothing else there, when the school doesn't have theirs going. And, and, and things, I mean, when I had the after-school program there, we did have the kids that really couldn't make it in the regular school, um, after-school program, but they did really well in ours. So, um, you know, so I, hopefully, we can do something on that basis too. So, um, I'm thrilled. Go for it.
Just one, uh, I have a, a comment here from, uh, uh, South Shore Little Lake that is also really excited about this, so. And I, I think it's one of those programs that, you know, after-school programs is, um, something that's really needed. And daycare, I mean, the hospital, e- e- everybody needs it. So the affordable daycare is something that's, so this is a part solution to me. All right, we have.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to add a little bit more information. Well, I don't want to add it, uh, end with a negative spin on this because our working relationship, um, with the school district is fantastic. You know, really couldn't be better partnership. But I do think it's important to let the council know because, uh, But I do think it's important to let the council know, because, you know, there's been a lot that's happened at that facility, especially in the last week. So as you know, there was a lease with Lake County Youth Services for that facility. There were a number of violations with the lease agreement and we met probably over four months ago initially in trying to correct those issues. We had a few bumps along the way, but we have, we had a number of times where there was verbal agreement on a path forward to sort of get control of the building and be able to fix some of the maintenance and safety issues that existed there. Unfortunately, that organization did not negotiate with us in good faith. And even while negotiating with us for a number of things this week, they were ripping equipment and facilities or fixtures out of that facility. There's nothing left in the kitchen anymore, except for the sinks, and they tried to take those and rip them off the wall. So I'm just letting you know that we've filed an unlawful detainer action against them. We'll be evicting them from that building. It's going to cost us more money than we envisioned to get things back in service, but we have no interest in working with that group in the future, in that facility or any other ones.
Well, it sounds like you did the right thing, because obviously, you know, they're not the most upstanding group.
Very unfortunate.
That kitchen equipment was belonged to the city?
Yeah, the kitchen equipment belonged to me. I let them use it. The stuff that was in that kitchen was mine, except for the refrigerator and freezer units.
We're happy to talk separately if that was the case. If there's anything that we can do to pursue retrieving that, we'd be willing to do so.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody wants to have a comment on this? Anybody on Zoom? Madam Clerk?
There are no hands raised on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Clear Lake and Conacti Unified School District for joint use of city property for our community recreation slash school uses.
Second. Okay, I think, Councilwoman Overton, we have a motion by Councilwoman Kramer and Councilwoman Overton seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move out to our last item. Mr. Flora. Oh, no, this is an item that's addressed by Chief White.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The item before you tonight is to ask for your consideration of waiving the live-scan rolling fee for volunteers of youth services organizations. You may be aware, but in September of 2021, the state passed legislation that requires volunteers in youth services organizations to complete a live-scan background check. Their purpose of that legislation was to exclude persons with a history of child abuse, which is certainly a laudable goal. Unfortunately, in order to get live-scan services, most entities, including the city, charge a fee to offset the cost of providing that service. That fee is in addition to any fee that's charged by DOJ or the Department of Justice. In the case of the volunteers, the Department of Justice has a $0 fee for the state-level check. However, our master fee schedule doesn't incorporate that, we have one $10 rolling fee. The South Shore Little League has approached us and asked for assistance in performing the live-scan checks. However, they've indicated that the rolling fee would impose a financial burden. I believe that youth programs are a cornerstone of having healthy communities and to deter young persons from being involved in criminal activity. And as we know, particularly in our area, getting volunteers is difficult. So I think any opportunity where we can try to support an organization that has volunteers and really the only thing standing in the way of them performing their duties is getting these live-scan checks done. So we're asking that you authorize amending the master fee schedule to waive that rolling fee for volunteers of youth services organizations. We had further clarified in the resolution that the department can restrict appointment slots, because of course, we wouldn't want to overwhelm the staff. And I believe that the organization, in the case of South Shore Little League, is willing to do that, and I would expect any other organization would be too. The estimated financial impact, and it's a very rough estimate, but would probably be a reduction of up to $2,000 in revenue. However, I believe $2,000 is a very small investment in the community to make things better for our youth. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Claffey.
Would this apply to all youth organizations, such as the soccer program or even the school district?
Yes, the restriction would be that the youth services organization must operate in Lake County. Originally, when I was drafting it, I included city of Clear Lake. However, I think we all know that, including my own staff, we have individuals that volunteer all around the lake. And I also know that there's youth that live in Clear Lake that benefit from other youth organizations in the county, so the restriction is just within the county of Lake.
Thank you. Great, okay. Any more comments from staff? If not, open it to the public. Any public comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, no hands raised.
Kramer, bring it back to the council, I just want to make one comment here. Again, Lake Shore Little League, South Shore Little League, provided us all with a letter to approve this item and, because it will help them financially and I think it's also a good idea for the safety of the kids that are part of this program, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's a great idea and I'd like to make a motion.
Please proceed.
Approve Resolution Number 2022-60, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, amending the master's fee schedule to waive the live-scan rolling fee for volunteers of youth services organizations.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Kramer and a second by Councilwoman Claffey. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we go to our last items. This is the city manager and council member reports. Mr. Flora.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, just a few items. I don't know if you saw on the news this week, but the city of Torrance resigned from the League of Cities in protest due to their belief that the League of Cities has been lax in fighting for local control. A lot of this started with the SB9 situation. So very interesting and very strong position by Torrance.
Was it, I believe, a five to zero or?
I think, I think it was a unanimous decision, yeah. The Splash Pad Project is crawling towards completion. If you have a chance to drive past there, all the main pieces of the equipment were installed this week, so it looks really cool. Probably work directors sent me a few videos of, they've been testing out the stuff and the buckets working and all that, it's going to be really exciting. There's still a couple of pieces of equipment, some controllers that haven't came in yet that we've been waiting on for a while, it'll come in over the next couple of weeks. So anyway, it's taken forever, but it's getting there.
So are we going to have a heat wave between?
Probably unlikely that we'll really open it for use by the community this year, but at least it'll be all ready to go in the spring. You're aware of the issues we've had over the last many years with Sunflower property? We did, you know, we have tried to continue negotiating with the property owner to resolve the violations on that property, which have not been successful. We did receive an abatement warrant from a judge, I suppose, a couple of weeks ago now. Just wanted to update you that the demolition permit was issued today and it sounds like the contractor expects to begin demolition work on the 28th of this month. And then the final thing, it was actually mentioned.
Twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth, yeah. About a possible PSPS event coming up, so I thought we were going to make it through the season without one. There was a few notifications that came out today. We did get a call to dispatch saying that there may be customers impacting Clear Lake, but the latest situation report and the mapping that's been put out by PG&E do not show any customers being impacted in the city. Only 49 total within Lake County. So anyway, these things do seem to evolve quite a bit, but as currently predicted, it would initiate at 6:00 a.m. on Sunday and extend maybe only a few hours or as far as Monday at 6:00 a.m. But again, we'll keep the council and the public updated if the situation changes for any of our Clear Lake customers, and that's my report.
Okay, Councilman Kramer.
Yes, not too much. Last week, I did attend, since Superintendent Salado is here, I might as well mention, I attended their special meeting last week with regard to their building program as it applies to the bond measures, is what I was sitting there on, but I think it also included other monies. An interesting meeting, it's quite a process, I've got to say, and hopefully, you're going to be able to resolve some of the issues. And then after that, along with several with Mayor Sloton, I attended the Woodland and Supervisor Sabachi and Superintendent Salado, attended the Woodland College Event, their 50th anniversary, it was, had a lot of great speeches and talking about the future. And in fact, I think next Tuesday, it was announced this morning, they're going to have, there'll be a special meeting to discuss the new, or applications for a new dean. And interim dean Lee encouraged any of, anybody who would want to attend that and had some input to attend it, so it's, I think that's something that we probably should look at if, I'm going to go, but I would encourage any of the rest of you to go. And last, we had our, Lower Lake Community Action Group had our drive-through Oktoberfest event last Saturday, went off very well, made a couple thousand dollars, so we're pleased. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Overton.
Okay, well, first off, I'd like to welcome Adeline to her new position. I am so glad that you're there and I know you're going to do an awesome job. So today, we had our meeting with our area agency board and they have pretty much approved everything I requested in our grant, so you and I will need to talk and let you know what we've got, which I'm really, really excited that we got some new stuff. So we had our annual ho-down and we did very well. I really appreciate everybody that supported our things. We made about $4,000. And that was, it was a small event, but it was a very successful event, so we really appreciate everybody that donated to that. We have our trunk-or-treat coming up, so we are still taking donations. I was not, with my ankle, was not able to get out like I normally do and sit at the stores and get donations, so anybody that would like to donate to help purchase candy, because that's always the hardest part, everybody, you know, we get like a thousand kids, so, you know, we normally have about, you know, between 2,000 and 2,500 people that show up there, about 1,000 of those are children. Afterwards, we're going to have the movie in the park, Hocus Pocus, so, and there'll be some food and popcorn that they can purchase there. So anybody that'd like to help, they can go on, they can, if they want to have a vehicle or volunteer, they can go online at downtownclearlake.com and fill out an application. And third, we're going to have the Thanksgiving dinner this year, so at the senior center on Thanksgiving Day. So also, another thing that we could use volunteers and donations for. So that's a community event, nobody makes any money off of it, it's just for the community to come and a place for people to come and that don't have any place else to go, so. Or if you have places, bring your family, you know, some of them brought families. So last time we had it, we served about 175 people, so, you know, I think it's a good thing for us to do, so. And I believe that's, that's it.
What times are the dinners between?
The Thanksgiving?
Yes.
We normally start 11 o'clock, so it's normally 11 to 2.
Hey, Councilman Claffey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending the Tourism Improvement District Meeting. Right now, they are trying to gain enough signatures to continue the program for another 10-year term, so I think they're at about a third right now of signatures. I also had the pleasure of joining you, Mr. Mayor, and our colleagues in Lakeport and at the county, to talk about some recreational opportunities. It's great seeing partnership between all three agencies and hopefully, we can, we can talk about the rec center and other potential opportunities here in Clear Lake and Lake County moving forward. And then finally, on top of trunk-or-treat, we have the city Halloween, I believe, is the 31st here at City Hall. Looks like the Goodfellas are also doing something across the street as well, a trunk-or-treat on the 31st, so it should be a fun weekend in about two weeks.
Our is on the 29th, by the way.
Trunk-or-treat here, the 29th, with the movie on the 29th, and then more candy if your children aren't totally hyped up on the 31st.
I think there's five or six trunk-or-treat events this year, so there's plenty of opportunity to get your candy.
To get on a sugar high?
Yeah.
Councilman Kramer, is it do-over?
I have a do-over, or an addition to. On, reminded me, on October 29th, there'll be a Lower Lake Cemetery cleanup. Be a combination between our Clear Lake Rotary and Lower Lake Community Action Group. Anybody who wants to, does not limited to members of either of those groups, however, if you want to come out and help to do some mowing around, around the cemetery, leaf raking, broken branch removal, that's, goes from 9:00 to 11:00, and it'll be followed by luncheon at Lower Lake Park, Russell Stich Park, if anybody's interested.
Mr. Mayor, Perdak?
Yeah, I got nothing, everybody covered it all, so I have nothing to report.
I also went to the college 50th year thing. I think it's an institution that we should cherish and support any which way we can. I also had now two meetings with the Coin Nation, which were quite challenging to a certain degree. But I think we finally have started making some progress, so. And I also went to the meeting that Councilman Claffey was referring to for, in the, at the Board of Supervisors Chamber for Recreation and Parks Facilities, so that's, that's my report. Any future agenda items? If not?